...for the pledge of allegiance led by the Colonial Forge High School Army, JROTC.
Present the colors. Present the colors. Color guard, present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Colors, right, face. Forward, march.
Madam Chair, while the flags depart, can we have a brief moment of silence for September 11th?
Yes, I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. McCosker.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Pledge Chair.
We'd like to thank the Colonial Forge Army, JROTC, for joining us this evening and presenting the colors and leading the pledge. We had with us Cadet Pincumbe, Cadet Regeling, Cadet Casey, Cadet Estrada, Cadet Schwartz, Cadet Aquavilla, and Cadet Newell. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? Ms. Hazard?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would ask that we have a motion to approve the agenda with the modification to take from consent item 7.05 and move that to action instead of consent.
And I have an addition or subtraction myself. I'd like to defer item 8.06 to the next scheduled meeting, and I'd ask that it be listed under information so that I may provide the board with documentation that would support and clearly define the intent of the resulting motion.
All right, we have a motion for an amended agenda. Do we have a second? Or, Ms. Hazard, do you accept that?
I'll accept that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to citizens' comments. Mr. McCosker, not to comment, to read it.
Well, I'd like to start off.
No, 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 no. You're not a citizen here.
Ferry Farm.
Like to talk about Ferry Farm?
Okay.
All right, let me get my computer up. Apologies. Okay. Individuals wishing to comment at this time, they do so by responding to the invitation of the chairman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides opportunity for citizens to comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees, or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedure outlined in Stafford County Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. We have three people who signed up for public comment. After those three people have spoken, anyone else that wishes to address the board, please come forward. The first speaker is John Meredith, to be followed by Kimberly Maselli and Michelle Gosham. Yes.
Hi. A little nervous, I've never been in front of a school board.
Well, we apologize for keeping you so long. We try to be prompt, but we had an extended work session this evening.
It's totally fine. My name is John Meredith, and I'm the husband of Mariah Snow, who's the owner and vocal coach of Mariah's Music and Arts. I have these flyers for you, I have nine of them exactly. Mariah's Music and Arts has been chosen to put on an anti-bullying musical. And so this musical came to us after its New York run. They won eight awards for junior musicals. And so Mariah's Music and Arts was chosen to be the first licensee to do this musical. And so she's been working, I think, two or three months now. She got me in the play, in the musical, and it's a great anti-bullying message. And I'm here for promotional support. And so what I'm, let me just tell you a little bit more about this show. It's entertaining, but it's also very in-your-face about bullying. It addresses shaming, hallway cruelty. It addresses separation of friends, cliques. All of these come together with an uplifting message and a way for kids to deal with this. And so they're working really hard. She would be here tonight, but they're practicing. And so she sent her biggest fan. We've done some newspaper and radio interviews, farmers market. We're just trying to get support of the school district. Initial feedback has been great. We've built these flyers, but I don't think it's enough to have just, I'm not a promoter. And so we need help getting the schools behind this. You can actually, if you all Googled "It's Easy, the Musical," you would see the promotional, the first, you know, promotional, I'm sorry, the first videos of them doing it in 2017. And we're going to put this show, I'm sorry, my three minutes is up. Basically, I'm coming to you for promotional support. I remember that my daughter came to me about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, and she goes, "Dad, I have to go to Chick-fil-A tonight on Tuesday night." I go, "Why? Why Tuesday night?" She goes, "I gotta support my school." And so I was like, "Wow, that's ingenious, you know? That's good promotion." And I'm asking for the same type of promotion behind this anti-bullying musical. It's very entertaining, and it starts a dialogue about bullying with your families. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meredith. Kimberly, Ms. Selly?
Hello, I'm Kimberly Maselli. I'm also here representing Mariah's Music and Arts, and came separately from her husband, so that was a nice friendly face to see. I'm her second biggest fan. Some of the things that John didn't hit that I want to let you guys know about the musical is that Mountain View High School has generously agreed to host our play, our set, they built our set. And all of the proceeds from the tickets go directly to Mountain View High School Fine Arts Program. So this play is not only informing our parents and setting the dialogue for the kids, it's going to help out a local high school. See, he's got a lot of that. Another thing, a lot of these students go to our Stafford County Elementary Schools. They're students there. We have a teacher who's in the play at Stafford County Public Schools. We have an assistant principal who is in the play, who is at a Stafford County Public School. So really, the only thing we're here for is just asking you to put this on Peach Jar, to waive any fee that might be incurred, and just with the click of a button, get that message out there so that we can spread the message and get families to come out, see this play, and then start talking with their kids about bullying and standing up, what to do if you're a bystander. And that's pretty much all I have to say. So, thank you, I appreciate your time, and I hope to see this on Peach Jar. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maselli. All right, Michelle Gosham?
Hello, my name is Michelle Goshorn, and I live at 20 Fletcher Drive in the Falmouth District. I'm never sure why I say Falmouth District, because based on where my kids go to school, many of you on the board represent me. I have three sons. Of these three sons, I have a gifted child, the average child, and the brilliant but it's going to play in the NFL, so why bother child? I have had IEPs and 504s, I have children at the top-ranked school in the county, and at one time at one of the lowest. I have been at a Title I school and one of the most affluent schools. I have children in signature programs, I have one who travels for high school, one who doesn't. I have had children at schools east and west of Route 1, north and south of Courthouse. To add to the mix, personally, I grew up as a free and reduced lunch kid, and have previously worked in the schools as a parent and a library assistant. Because of that, I don't have the luxury to advocate for just one thing. I mean, of all of that, maybe tall boys, but I think we can agree that doesn't make much sense. Just as I have to look at the schools' issues holistically, so do you. We elect each of you to make a hard decision for the entire community. In this coming year, you have a lot of challenges ahead. You have a teacher shortage and class size issues. You have funding issues. You have an elementary school redistricting that even if it is perfect, you're going to have people upset. I mean, that's just the nature of it. You're going to be called on to make some really difficult decisions, and you will need to rise above politics and do what's best for our entire community. Couple weeks ago, a group of concerned citizens met to discuss the challenges facing education in Stafford County. We come from all across the county, from different districts and schools. Some of us have been advocating for a while now, some are new, some were heavily involved in the 2015 middle school redistricting. We are deeply concerned about the redistricting. We want you to know that we are here and that we are watching your actions. We are not here to stand up for one school or one neighborhood, but to be a voice for all students and employees of Stafford County Public School. And we are here to make sure that each of you do the same. Personally, I strongly encourage each of you to walk each of the elementary schools prior to taking any action of options when we're there of the elementary school redistricting. Each school is unique, and numbers on a page don't tell the full story. Mr. Kizner recently tweeted, "All children should have an unwavering right to an exceptional education regardless of whether they live, whether, whether they live, where they live or go to school." To make that happen, we need an unbiased, transparent decisions that are in the best educational interest of our entire community. That is what we elected you to do, and that's the standard we're going to hold you to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goshorn. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? And we have a sign-in sheet on that podium there, or the, I'm not sure what you call it, the wall. If you can sign in after you speak, then we'd appreciate it.
Madam Chair, members of the board, welcome to Dr. Kizner. Dr. Dean Federoff, 30 Cooks and Drive, Stafford, Virginia. It's been quite some time since I addressed the board, but recent meetings and upcoming elementary school redistricting cannot go without comment. For many years, this board and previous boards and redistricting committees have discussed design or architectural capacity versus program capacity, the latter being the correct figure. The Board of Supervisors, at their last meeting, rejected all capacity figures from the school board. After nearly 20 years, one board member, quote, "Recently learned of an alternative method for capacity." A review of that meeting and a deep dive shows that had nothing to do with what's in the best interest of all of the students of Stafford County, but everything to do with certain neighborhood developments. We saw blatant attempts during the middle school redistricting of fighting, of one neighborhood pitted against another. We shouldn't see that again. At a minimum, a conflict of interest exists here. Hashtag "Pass the gavel" is one approach. I think there's several others. The board could consider a vote of no confidence leading to an election of a new chair. A letter of censure may also be appropriate. But I like to look at these options as the three Rs, not the ones educators use every day, but recuse, recall, recuse, resign, or recall. And oh, for the benefit of the board, the precedence in Virginia is well-established. The governing body from which a person is subject to recall gets stuck with the legal bills. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board?
First, I want to say hi to everybody. It's my first time addressing the school board. I'm going to try to make this real fast.
If you could use the microphone, then I think everyone could.
This one?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay. I'm going to try to make this real quick, because I know you've got a lot of things on your agenda.
Could you give us your name and address?
My name is Ed Williams. I live at 99 Baskerville Road in Stafford. The reason I'm here today is that I used to work in law enforcement, and I used to also work as a social worker for a organization and court paper called, it was a court paper correctional facility. It was a maximum-security prison for children, and it's still going very strong today. Reason I'm addressing the school board today is that we have, I have a nonprofit organization here in Fredericksburg that are currently working with young people dealing with mental health, also drug abuse, and also the performing arts. Reason I'm addressing the school board here today is that we're trying to rally support for the young people in the Fredericksburg and the Stafford area. We've gotten some support as far as people letting us use their facilities, bringing these young people together, getting them off the street, and also having them dealing with their mental issues. We're all much very aware that there's a spike in young suicide. The rate of young suicide in this area has spiked, and I think one of the reasons that what we're dealing with is because these young people do not have a venue or outlet for their frustration and anger. They're turning inwardly, and they turn towards each other. My hope is that, I teamed up with an organization called Free By Running, is that what we do, we have poetry, we have performing arts, we have dance, we have the spoken word, we have people come out who are into culinary, who wants to do different types of food, we have yard sales, and we also have them create their own, whatever they do to create, express themselves in outward expression. So I am here before the school board today to ask, you know, guys, if you guys can possibly assist us in what we're trying to do. It is not a district situation, it is not a different school board situation, this is a whole country situation. This thing is spreading like wildfire. And I feel that if we don't address these issues with these young people today, we're headed for a real big problem in the near future. And I do this because out of the fact that a lot of these children don't feel loved, they don't feel a place they have, they can come and be nonjudgmental for their lifestyle, how they look, and they feel ostracized. Our goal is to give these young people a place where they can come and feel accepted and loved, and they can express themselves freely without being persecuted in a nonviolent and a constructive manner. So I, like I said, once again, I'm here before the school board to ask the assistance of the school board. We spoke with Cherie Johnson last year when we was first getting this thing off, time's up anyway. Thank you for hearing me, and hopefully, I've got some, I've got a flyer, a couple flyers and brochures, and. We've also helped kids in Haiti. We built a school in Haiti to help with education and refurbishing of Haiti. And what we're doing now, hopefully, we're helping their people there, but we also want to help people. I live here. I don't live in Haiti. So we're trying to do something here locally. So I appreciate anything that any of you guys can do to help us achieve our goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you sign?
Did you sign?
He doesn't have any, he doesn't have a hand.
Scared to talk. Paul Waldowski, 8 Picket Lane, in the gerrymandered Rock Hill District, also own property in the gerrymandered Griffiths-Whitewater District. Tomorrow is the eight-year anniversary of my dad passing, so I felt obligated to come speak publicly. And Mr. Superintendent, this has been on my desk since July 26, 2018. There are 30 schools. I encourage you as a leader to be at every one of them when they open and every one of them when they close. That should give you 12 weeks of marching orders. Yes, I'm retired Air Force, so I'm used to giving orders. Some of you wish me happy birthday. I'm not Mr. Waldowski, I'm Captain Retired Waldowski. One of the things you'll find when you go to these schools, you're going to find that traffic is lined up when they come to school and when they don't come to school. We have sidewalks to nowhere. And you probably don't know this, but I'm the chairman of the 2030 Cicadas. See, they'll be 17 years old, and that's how old you have to be to get a PhD. That's a public high school diploma. I do have a PhD also. Mine's from New York. I think we should get four minutes of speech time, not three minutes. And when it comes to redistricting, 2021 is when real redistricting comes. The 2020 census will be out. You'll have real numbers. We're living by the 2011 gerrymandered aspects. That is now in the hands of all the county leaders of the research paper I wrote to the Justice Department. Golly, I like the term advocate. I've only been an advocate for 25-plus years. Yes, I am smarter than a fifth grader. And if you just listen to some of these people who know about capacity and the real numbers, so we don't have these conflicts of neighbor versus neighbor. And I'm really into numbers because one school in one district by one board member who didn't even receive 50% of the vote plus one is just not a democracy.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? No, thank you, Mr. Waldowski. Seeing none, we'll close the citizen comment period, come back to the board for board member comments. Do we have any school board committee reports? Ms. Leeken?
Thank you. The Governance Committee met last week and discussed a few items, which you have, may have seen the resulting documentation for, I think, Missy emailed it out to you, or a link. The two biggest items were the discussion of the conflict of interest, where Mr. McCosker asked us to address that particular topic. With respect to the hypothetical situation that he presented regarding the sitting board member who is a paper salesman, the resolution to that would be governed by the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act. The committee will be bringing a comprehensive policy that includes this act as part of our guiding policy, but also ties to a formal code of conduct that will likely be a compilation of various codes taken from the Stafford Board of Supervisors and the Virginia School Board Association document that we signed back in January. Just for clarification, there are two ways to address a policy. One is as pertains to a matter of law, and one that pertains to a matter of ethics. Mr. McCosker's inquiry pertains to a matter of law, and I'll be adding that statute to a future agenda item with other documentation so that the entire board has an opportunity to view it before we consider it. The other issue was the no trespass order. We discussed the need to have a solid policy that explains how an order comes to be and what the steps are to address that if a parent or guardian is faced with it. Dr. Kizner is looking into bringing us a sample policy that we may consider in the near term. However, I have learned that the General Assembly has addressed it in statute, though it is a bit more complex than what I believe it really needs to be. It involves an audience before the circuit court, but I believe that if we can add another avenue for resolution before that step, it would help, and it would certainly alleviate the escalation of perhaps a costly trip to court. Our courts are already overburdened, and I prefer to attempt a resolution on the board level first. I'll look forward to Dr. Kizner reporting back to us with some options, and hope we'll have his feedback on these items at our next governance meeting, which I think is next week? Yes, yeah. Okay, good. Holly, Jamie, do you have anything that you want to add from governance? Those were the two that stuck out the most. Okay, thank you.
Any other reports? Dr. Chase?
The Finance and Budget Committee met last week, but I think what we discussed will come up later in the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. McCosker?
Yes, the Joint Working Committee, Board of Supervisors School Board, met on August 27th, and we talked about the charge of the Joint Working Committee. The first thing was that the elected co-chairs, myself and Tom Cohn, are the co-chairs of Board of Supervisors and School Board. We also talked about the charge, and, you know, we have Dr. Chase on the board as well. We also talked about the charge of the committee, where there was discussions between the Board of Supervisors and us about, you know, what would we do, would we, would we be the only committee, and this was a Board of Supervisors put forth, would we be the only committee that met jointly? Because I guess it had come to their supervisor and their commissioner, and then Mr. Foley, that there's several committees, and they wanted to kind of put it down to one committee that meets jointly. So I know Dr. Chase and I both kind of pushed back on that, and also that all CIP decisions would also come to the Joint Working Schools Committee, and it wouldn't have anything to do with the finance and budget. You would be out, right? So we said, "No, that's not the way we do business. We want to make sure that, you know, the Finance and Budget Committee still keeps the CIP responsibility for the school board." And we also think that we need, we need to talk a little bit more about, we weren't all about having just the Joint Working Schools Committee being the only joint meeting between the school board and the Board of Supervisors. So, so that moved on. I don't think there's anything else on that front. Was there, Dr. Chase? No. But we did discuss some of the financing, VPSA financing. We talked about the reasons that we need the Fredericksburg Christian, and as we all know, they funded the Fredericksburg Christian with the VPSA. They've also funded Ferry Farm Planning. So those are two things that we wanted, and we talked about, and we kind of cleared the air on, you know, the number of students had, the number of students in our chicklet chart have nothing to do with the need for Fredericksburg Christian.
They don't have a chicklet chart.
And so that's, so that's that. We also discussed the CIP process. We did make some changes to the CIP process. That was approved by the folks that were there, and so, and the school board members, and the Board of Supervisor members, so that's, hopefully that'll be coming to us pretty soon. And the review of the annual budget calendar, that was just a quick review to make sure that we were kind of synced up at the JWC level, and that was a BOs document. The shared services update was the last thing we spoke about, and that was predominantly about the contracting officer. I think they, this, two weeks ago, they had another announcement out on the street. I think they had to raise the, add a little bit of money to the salary to the folks they were getting, so hopefully the next JWC, I think it's supposed to be the 24th. Hopefully, the next JWC, I think it's supposed to be the twenty-fourth, will, of this month, we'll hear, we'll hear some more. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. I, I would like to, to clarify, the, the changes in the CIP process were in the process that is going to come to the board for a decision. There weren't any changes made there. There was discussion of potential changes in that process. And so it will come to this board for a decision on the, the CIP. So, I want to clarify that, that committee doesn't make decisions on that. Thank you. Ms. Hazard?
Just quickly, the Legislative Committee met. We reviewed the priorities. Additional input was added by members. The document is being reviewed. We have scheduled after our PTO meeting, a very short, brief meeting for the Legislative Committee to look over those priorities so that we can bring them to the board on the twenty-fifth, because we have had them on for information. But we received an email which has been forwarded to the board about the timeline for the Board of Supervisors. So we're trying to marry everybody's schedule, so that should be approved on the eighteenth. And as soon as that is, Missy can forward it to you all for inclusion on the next agenda, because the Board of Supervisors has a October second deadline. So, since we don't have a lobbyist and we want to use theirs, let's try and use their resources, sharing their resources with us. There was a meeting scheduled this Friday between, for legislative issues. That meeting has been moved, obviously, for reasons, I believe, to the following, to the twentieth as well. But anyway, so that has been moved. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Decatur?
Yes, just real quick to update you guys. The Public Private Day School Committee was supposed to have met today at three. It has been rescheduled due to impending weather. I know we've been kind of waiting on that committee for answers to a few things that are ongoing, so I'll keep you guys updated on when that's rescheduled for.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right, that brings us to board member comments. Ms. Egan, would you like to start us?
Sure, thank you. So I'll start with a little September eleventh remembrance here. While today is a day to remember all those who were lost seventeen years ago on this day, I wanted to take a moment to remember a group of specific folks. Sarah Clark, James De Bonior, and Hilda Taylor were teachers from Washington DC who were selected by the National Geographic Society to participate in a field trip to California. In this field trip, they, with their three students, would spend their time at Channel Islands National Marine Sanctuary to work as marine biologists to study oceanic life. This field trip allowed urban elementary students access to a world beyond Washington DC. The trip to California never happened due to the plane carrying the students and the three teachers being hijacked by five extremists. Although all one hundred and eighty-four victims of Flight seventy-seven are memorialized in the Pentagon, memorial adjacent to the Pentagon, these teachers are now added to the memorial to fallen educators for their loss of life in the line of duty. I didn't even know that this, this existed, so I'm looking forward to getting there at some point to pay tribute to our fallen teachers. Lastly, I want to welcome back staff, students, and everyone that makes this incredible machine work. And finally, welcome aboard, Dr. Kizner. Glad to have you here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Chase?
Well, first, I'd, I'd like to welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Kizner. Your first ten days on the job, you've had a visit from the governor and a hurricane to prepare for. So let's talk about hitting the ground running, and I'm very glad to have you here. I'd also like to thank Ms. Cale and Mr. Nichols for their leadership during the past few months. We are fortunate to have such a great staff. So the governor came to recognize Dan Reichert as one of the Regional Teachers of the Year, and I missed it. I was kind of disappointed, but then my husband reminded me that I had actually seen the real show. Last December, I went on the Yellow School Bus Tour and got to visit Dan Reichert's classroom and watch him in action. He was giving a math lesson on how to calculate percentages, but what really struck me was the other lesson he was giving, which was a lesson in kindness and empathy. He asked if any students wanted to come to the front of the class and share their answers. As students walked to the front of the class, the entire class chanted encouragement. When one student didn't have the correct answer, the entire class chanted, "That's all right, that's okay." And it reminded me that our teachers do so much more than just prepare our students for SOLs. The really exceptional teachers understand that we need to create a classroom climate that supports learning, but also prepares our children to be kind and thoughtful citizens in life. So to all our amazing teachers in Stafford County, thank you, and let's have a great year. I would also like to express some concern about staffing at two of the schools in my district. I noticed in the last class size report that Falmouth, which is a class size reduction school, is close to capacity for third grade, and thus we may risk losing state funds. I also noted that Drew Middle School has over fourteen classes with thirty-two students or more. Given the small student body at Drew and the high proportion of impoverished students, that's quite a few really full classes. So hopefully, some of that'll get taken care of. And finally, shout out to our supervisors for funding the purchase of Fredericksburg Christian School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Mr. McCosker? Ms. Hazard?
All right. Well, I too was going to, I'm going to welcome Dr. Kizner, but I would think I was thinking along the same lines as Dr. Chase is. Our last superintendent, when he came, he started on April first, and we sent him over to give the budget, and you come here and you get a hurricane and other things. So I hope it's not us that brings these crazy things right off the bat, but again, welcome. Thank you for coming and being with us. And we, you know, we're excited for your leadership. I'm very excited to hear about your vision and using your background about special education. Going again to what, about the Fredericksburg Christian School. I think this is an unbelievable opportunity for us to create a preschool center of excellence. It includes Head Start for our families in Stafford County. One of the things that strikes me so much, when I talk to my high school teachers and middle school, they all say, "We want the resources," and believe me, they do, but they always say, "If you can get it right from the beginning." Gosh, there's so much less that we have to do. So how can we get it right at the beginning? And I think this is another step to just enhance our wonderful Head Start in education, and I really want it to be a center of excellence. So I'm very excited about your experience there. As Ms. Egan touched on, the, today, of course, is nine eleven. I believe many of us have different memories of, of this day, but I think the one thing that always strikes me in the pictures, besides the horror, is the amazingness, and that's not even a word, of, of our people and how we do look out for each other. And as we are sitting here tonight, looking out with a hurricane coming, we don't know where it will be, I hope we also see that same amazing part about us of looking out for our neighbor in the midst of tragedy. I hope we do it every day in between, but I do believe also tragedy can bring out the best in people, too. So again, you all always know, I always say, "Check on that neighbor, make sure you take that time." We need to do that. And I wanted to thank the countless people who made the opening day of school go off the excitement of seeing those, yes, the class of twenty thirty-two arrived as kindergarteners in, in September. And so if that doesn't make you feel, well, I know how it's making me feel, but thank you. And there's no other way to say them from the bottom of my heart, but the excitement, and I know some kindergartners, and they were hilarious talking about their first day of school, and they had a great time. Let's hope that they feel that same way when they become the seniors this year, the class of twenty nineteen, and for everybody in between. So again, just a big thank you.
Ms. Decatur?
Welcome. Thanks for being here. Thanks in advance for putting up with us. I also wanted to congratulate Dan Reichert on his regional nomination for Teacher of the Year and wish him the best of luck on Friday as he goes to the state. I believe you'll be joining them at the reception.
They've actually delayed it.
They have. They've delayed it, yeah.
Not surprising. It's in Richmond.
And Holly, you kind of, you kind of stole the thunder about this, this, this team thing, but I, I wanted to tell just a quick story because I'm one to preach about leadership and setting the example for, for all. And you, you did that. They told us to show up to Kate Waller Barrett. We didn't know what we were showing up for, why, but I did. And if you know me, you know that at night I am business as usual, but during the day I have my boys with me, and that's what I do. So I showed up at Kate Waller Barrett with an infant and a two-year-old, and then the governor showed up and invited us on stage. So I went ahead and did that with an infant and a two-year-old, I'm sorry, a three-year-old. And it was, it was pretty nerve-wracking, and it was probably written all over my face. And Holly, you just reached over and you took the little one, and, and that's, that's teamwork, you know? So that's, that's, that's what we want to, I mean, that's just a small example, but we want to lead by example.
Kate Waller Barrett is, it's all about the kids.
Yeah. Well, I won't tell you, I won't tell you the rest of it, and while I'm really indebted to Holly, but, you know, if you, you know my, well, so every time the, the kids would, and they're doing something right over at Kate Waller Barrett, can, I mean, gosh, they're amazing, but the, the kids would all chant, and they literally scared. Well, there was a blowout, and, and Holly was holding him, not me, so I'm, I'm even more thankful. Anyways, it's just an example of, of the leadership that we want to, you know. Well, that's all, thanks.
Thank you for sharing, Ms. Decatur. We're proud of Ms. Hazard.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not all. Mariah's Music and Arts, thank you guys for being here. Would you please send me an email? And I'd be happy to spread the word on Facebook as well as figuring out what else we can do.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
So Dr. Chase and I did not speak about what we were going to talk about today. Oh, no, it's not. I think we all sound the same, we had the same thought process here, so we, we didn't speak before coming in here. But thank you again, welcome, Dr. Kizner, and thank you Pam Cale and Tom and all others that, that helped these past couple of months. Matt and Chris Fulmer also, thank you so much for putting up with, with me and Dr. Chase. Anytime we needed something, y'all were there to help us. We're the New Links, so we appreciate you all's help immensely. And so North Stafford High School Library is one of seventeen libraries showcased in the American Libraries Magazine, September, October twenty eighteen, Library Design Showcase Issue. This association mission is to enhance learning and ensure access to information for all. And in the September, October issue, it honors innovation and interesting construction that effectively addresses library user needs in the US. North Stafford High School also is the only school project included in this issue. The library also received Best Design Award from VA-4LE and a feature article in Interiors and Source Magazine. It's a beautiful library. Thank you all so much for continuing to build, and, and you know, the public has been there, and it is an awesome library, but it, it, it's just beautiful, so thank you so much. Kudos again to Dan Reichert for being selected for Regional Teacher of the Year. From Kate Waller Barrett, he's fifth grade teacher, and not only in the Virginia region, three Teacher of the Year, but also Washington Post Teacher of the Year. He received our young, his young phenomenal ways, which includes relationship building. You know, he just respects his students. The principal and the teachers there at Kate Waller Barrett, and all through the schools in Stafford, their amazing job, they do amazing job. Our public schools are awesome, the students appreciate you all for all you do, and I hope that this new year brings more teachers, more male teachers, a bug for HR, more diversified teachers, because I believe that the students need to be able to see themselves in teachers. So we need more teachers, male teachers, diversified teachers. I know they heard me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. McCosker?
Ferry Farm.
I, I might talk about Ferry Farm tonight. I think I passed the gavel or passed the microphone the last few times, so. So nine eleven, you know, let's never forget. I'm glad we had, had the opportunity to take a few moments. Growing up on Long Island, seventeen miles from Manhattan, and uncles and cousins and, and the fire department for New York City. You know, the towns around Long Island lost, my town lost fifty people. My prom date, my sister's prom date, they all worked in the, in the buildings. And of course, the fire department is, I don't like the word, the word, use the word incestuous, but the fire department was brothers, cousins, uncles. And so my uncle was thirty-five years with the New York City Fire, and he, and he knew like everybody in the battalion that, that passed away. And so, you know, so just never forget, because, you know, I asked one of my kids' friends, I have an eleven-year-old, I have a twelve-year-old, and then I have two other ones that are in college now. And so, you know, what, so last eleven-year-old, so what do you know about nine eleven? And the responses were pretty sparse. So that's when we say never, about Holocaust and these things, when we say never forget, that's what we mean, is never forget. We need to, we need to talk to our kids about what happened, whether it's wars that our, our soldiers and sailors and marines fought, or if it's horrible acts like this, whether it's at the Pentagon where I work now, or, or in New York, or on, as Ms. Egan mentioned, the, the Flight ninety-three, right? So happier note, welcome, Dr. Kizner. You know, your first task from us is send the hurricane away. Dr. Kizner is a, a straight shooter. He's a, we, we interviewed him, he's a, he's a get-to-the-point, get-the-job-done, and that's why he won this, this position over several qualified candidates. When we asked him the redistricting question, he said, "Well, redistricting, and it's important to every community." He said something to the effect that I wasn't invited to many barbecues at my neighborhood because I redistricted my own neighborhood and my kids. So that's the quality of leadership and the honesty you're going to get from, 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 from the superintendent. Great school opening, opening day, very, very hot. So I was the silly one that showed up to schools in a tie and rolled, sooner rolled my sleeves up, and I, I looked at like I was up all night, you know? I loosened up a little bit the tie. But the kids, and the staff, seeing the staff, welcome the kids despite the heat, and, and the kids, the faces and the looks on the kids, where when you say, "Hey, welcome," it's a great opportunity. Some days I get to do it, some years I get to do it, and some, some, some I don't. Thanks to a lot of the staff, Ms. Cale, and I, and I, there's a lot of staff was out, out and about on our thirty schools, but thanks to Tom and Nichols and Pam Cale for, for showing their face, too, down in the southern schools. You know, every year, we get to the funding issue, and that's this time of year, you know? So I know we're having discussions about program capacity and, and, but, you know, I'll tell you, my priorities, and they'll come up here tonight, but my priorities are not going to change, like they haven't changed in the six years I've been on this board. It's going to be educational professionals, it's going to be teacher para, and those, and those folks this year that have not caught up to the pay band or the, or the least, the data that we have, I'm going to push hard for that, and I'm going to push hard to lower class sizes. And, you know, what I always tell folks, they say, "Well, are you sure you do that?" Well, rewind the tape. You know, I'm painful, I know, I'm annoying, yes, I know that. But I'm, but it's all about for good reasons, right? And I'll let you know when, I'll let you know if your, your breath doesn't smell right. Thanks for the Board of Supervisors and Tom Foley for funding. They're passing me, I guess my breath doesn't smell right. Board of Supervisors and Tom Foley and our staff for funding the FCS and the Ferry Farm design. And so what, you know, I think we'll have a good rapport with the team over there, and I, and I appreciate us moving forward on that. Point of clarity, Ms. Egan's comment earlier about my paper company, you know, I just, this is my example for the legal aspect of, of a conflict of interest issue. Just, I, I just want to clarify for the record that I, I mentioned real estate agents and as my primary issue that I wanted to get looked at by a legal. This board supports the buying of millions of dollars in real estate. Millions of dollars in real estate. Case in point, seven million dollars was just for FCS. So we need to take a good look at our board for several things. And so I want to make sure that we do that. I'm, I'm all in. Staff, thank you so much for your hard work for these last couple of weeks. It's not easy. It's not easy with, with all the changes and all the programs that, and it's going to get harder with program, new programs coming aboard and sustaining old programs, and then going right into budget season, and then with budget season, redistricting. So we're going to have a full plate, a lot of meetings, and I look forward to your support, Dr. Kizner, to make sure we're making the right calls. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. I want to echo everyone's welcome to Dr. Kizner. We're very happy to have you here. And thank Mrs. Cale and Mr. Nichols and everyone else who stepped up in that interim. One thing about Stafford County is we keep going. We have such incredible staff that we know we're going to make- You know, we have such incredible staff that um we know we're going to make, make progress and, and move forward. Um, and along that vein, I'd like to recognize our Director of Transportation for all his work and suffering that he has gone through, um, and, and, and also to thank our families for their patience and understanding. It's always a challenge to get those buses straight, it's, it's, it's a challenge to have drivers for all the buses, and it's even more challenging when the heat index is up over one hundred. So thank you to everyone who, um, you know, helped us make it through this week, but particularly our, our Transportation Director, because most often what he receives are complaints and um not people that, that think about that bus being on time. And, and, and Lord knows, these complaints, I mean, there, there, there are grounds for them, but please be assured that, you know, we're doing everything we can to, to make these corrections and get those children to school on time and get them home, resolve the issues where they may be, you know, walking on dangerous streets. So just send, send it in and I just ask that you, you, you give us, um, you know, give us some patience as we work through it, but we, we take them all very seriously. Dr. Kizner is, um, is, is the, the central point for, uh, for taking those and, and making sure that everything gets done, but, but thank you to, to everyone and everyone who helped us open school. I, I, I made it to all the schools in my district. I tried to, to do a whirlwind through the six schools in, in Rock Hill and I was able to do that this year. And the main topic of conversation was, "We're going to be doing this early next year." So here we are on the first day of school and what were we talking about the first day of next year? So we're, uh, we're forward thinkers here in, in Stafford County Public Schools, but it, it's an exciting time. Welcome to all the new teachers, welcome back to all our returning of staff. The New Teacher Institute was um very exciting, um, lots of new faces, uh, some people new to education, some new to Stafford County, but everyone was excited and, you know, all the, all the staff that helped out on that and, and put that together. I know these things just do not magically happen. Um, they're, they are a challenge. So we, we appreciate everything you do, you to, to try to accommodate the needs of our, our, our staff so that we can do what we are charged to do with providing that um superior education to every single student. And I, I, I really appreciate your philosophy and approach, Dr. Kizner, about every child deserves it. So we, we look forward to, to seeing, um, you know, a, as we go forward, the, that implementation. Um, just, just a word about nine-one-one, I was here that day, it was a very solemn meeting, and when we recited the Pledge of Allegiance that night, it was different. It was very, very special and I, I think that, that we do need to remember and we need to, to teach our children and, you know, our, our community um knows very well the impact. We have a lot of military, a lot of government, um, people in our community. So thank you, Mr. McCosker, for um asking for that moment of silence this evening. You, what, Ms. Young?
Go ahead, you're done?
Um, yes, I'm done. I, and, and I, I just want to apologize again for starting this meeting late. We are making a real effort to keep on our time schedule, but we did have, um, you know, we had a work session that followed a special call meeting and it was important that we got through, um, you know, some of those discussions because one of them is going to be an action item, you know, on tonight's agenda, so we appreciate your indulgence.
I, I just didn't say anything about nine-eleven because everybody knows where they were and um I don't know, McCosker, I don't know if you were at the Pentagon, but um I happened to be working at Mary Washington um back in, you know, that same year and um we used to, um, CMS, you know, just technology and Mary Washington had um convention up in DC, so I was in DC, we stayed in the hotel, was on the seventeenth floor watching the TV and, and saw what we saw, but at the same time, the hotel shook, so it felt as if the hotel was hit. And so, you know, you just took action and we were locked in for three days. So you do remember, so sometimes it's just internal and I don't say anything, but I was locked in for three days in DC, you couldn't get out or in, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Kizner, after the board comments, it's your turn.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we don't have a three-minute rule.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the school board for this opportunity, and I say this sincerely, you guys have remarkable energy, you are very informed, you put a lot of time in, you are completely exhausting me, okay? So I look forward to be tired with you guys. I do want to thank Ms. Cale also, it's been a very smooth transition, people at the central office and the buildings have been terrific. Um, today I got a chance to visit my fourteenth school and I echo what I already heard, our teachers, our principals, our custodians, our secretaries, um, everyone that I've come across have been um positive, remarkably professional, um, very much cheerleading their school, cheerleading their roles, and I have to also tell you, you, we now have the greatest students. Um, I, I've met a lot of the young little kids that um made me laugh and, you know, the only thing they really understand that I have something to do with snow days, but that doesn't matter. They've been great.
A hundred degrees.
I do also want to thank um our Executive Director of Transportation, um, you know, the first week in every school system, it's a challenge and, and Barry has been, I told him, he, he kind of laughed about it, that I, I went to visit Transportation twice last week, um, instead of just trying to do an email if you are just trying to drive over there, thank the staff, watch them work, try to get out of their way, and if I could help problem solve, and he's, he wants to resolve the problems. I do want the board to know, um, you know, we started off the year almost thirty-two bus drivers short, and the first couple of days, everybody in that office that had a license to drive a bus was driving a bus. The positive thing is that um nineteen additional drivers have been trained and getting on the road, so we're, we're addressing that, and there's eleven right now going through training, so we're making great progress in that area. I can't address if somebody has left, but at least we're increasing. And a teacher, and um bus monitors, we started off almost nine short, and again, we've made some real progress and now, uh, as of today, we're three short. So we made great gains, so I do want to thank, um, thank them. I do want to mention something also about the weather. We've been working very closely with the local emergency management team. I want to thank Mr. Martin and Ms. Johnson, they've been very involved. Uh, this, um, I guess this afternoon, Mr. Martin and I attended a, a briefing at, at the government complex, there'll be another one tomorrow morning. I plan tomorrow to send a letter out to parents and staff talking about this emergency, the steps we are going to be taking. Um, only thing I've heard of, over and over again, this is very, very serious, the rain will be remarkable, um, you know, we are talking double-digit number of inches, um, and the water, the ground is, I think I heard today, ninety-eight percent already saturated and doesn't take a lot, twenty, thirty miles wind for tree limbs and electricity being knocked out. So we are going to provide a link for our, our community, our, our parents and so on, to help them to prepare. People need to have a family plan, people need to really take this very serious. Our school system will obviously work closely with our local officials. Five of our site, five of our schools are shelters, so um, you know, we obviously want to be a partner and, and respect that. Um, so, you know, we're, we're evaluating the, um, if the school and when the school should close, okay? And then over the weekend, we had a meeting internally this morning with our uh Buildings and Grounds and, and Emergency Team, and we have a plan in place to inspect our facilities Saturday and Sunday and early Monday morning, because again, um, you know, everybody's just thinking it's coming Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but as you know, some other storms have stayed around and this storm has the potential of not leaving quickly. So um, so I guess I'm really sharing with the public is that in our letter that we will send, we will keep them informed on how they could be informed of the school's of steps. So um, now that's really what I'll share, it's been a great week and I thank you and I'm, I'm excited and it's been, it's been really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve four items on the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to Action Item eight point oh one, approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to Policy thirty-three oh eight and Regulation thirty-three oh eight R, charter schools. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McCosker, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Eight point oh two, approve the superintendent's proposed tuition fees in accordance with Policy fifty-seven oh three, tuition fees for non-resident students. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the superintendent's proposed tuition fees in accordance with Policy fifty-seven oh three.
Okay, motion by Ms. Young, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCosker. Do we have any discussion? No? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item eight point oh three, approve the school board's two thousand twenty budget development calendar.
Motion to approve, the, um, do I say amended?
Eight point oh three, yes.
Yeah.
All right.
FY twenty budget development calendar.
Okay, motion by Ms. Young, do we have a second? Second. Second by Ms. Decatur, discussion?
I have a quick question. Um, I'm just curious, um, how many, how many times has the Board of Supervisors, Fab and y'all's Fab, um, met? And have you ironed out, have you, I know that you guys were trying to get kind of in sync with both calendars, was that established? Because I, I've seen ours, but I haven't seen theirs.
We have not met them, met with them, but we got their calendar of dates for the CIP, joint CIP meetings and included those in our calendar.
Ambition was Chris Fulmer, so.
Gotcha. And then the other question was, I did see where we're having our meeting with the PTA and the PTOs, um, next, next week?
Yes.
Next week. Um, but I didn't see in there where we were going to be kind of bringing forth what their priorities were and how we were going to incorporate, how we, how we were going to plan to get those in there, should we choose to take up some of their priorities and stick and put it in the budget?
Sure.
Where, where in the calendars does that take place?
Right, so if you notice, October ninth is the date that we um approve our priorities, but you'll notice there's the PTA meeting and then on the twenty-fifth, we have a public budget hearing. So there are several opportunities to, to make adjustments.
Okay, all right. If we could, if we could add that somewhere, maybe at your next Fab meeting, kind of figure out for, for all of us, because I, that's one Fab meeting that I would like to go to. Um, you know, just, I, I would like to see that part of, of the, more involved in this process.
Right, and we're waiting on, we're, we're trying to find a date for the next Fab meeting because it was originally scheduled for the same day as the first set of advisory committee meetings, so.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just had a question. Um, how this is presented, that March nineteenth, we present the school board's approved budget and then it has the joint school board and supervisors' budget work session. I assume that is, maybe it's on the nineteenth, but sometime during that time, is that correct? I just wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly.
So the, the nineteenth is um one of their scheduled meeting dates, so we kind of had to work around, we didn't want to present at the same meeting that the county administrator was presenting at, which was their meeting prior, so we went to the next, um, the meeting that followed that, which was the nineteenth. So the plan would be to, um, like we did, um, I believe this past year, and try to line it up where, um, we have a meeting with them and then, um, whether it's before the meeting you guys present, um, somebody from the board would present to them and then we, um, have the joint work session following that or vice versa, obviously make more sense to have the presentation maybe at their afternoon meeting and then do like a dinner meeting in the past, but.
Actually, that's exactly where I was going, was we have in the past gone back and forth on a three o'clock or a four o'clock delivery because, I mean, excuse me, a three o'clock or a seven o'clock delivery, because many of our staff members or those that might be interested in what we are presenting cannot be at the three o'clock meeting for obvious reasons, although it gives us, you know, the time to meet. I just, I only just bring that up is every year, we get into the three o'clock, seven o'clock debate on the presentation of, um, the budget, which maybe can be something talked about, because I, I know you don't have it on here and it's not, and we have to work around everybody's schedule, but I do think that is a very important meeting for our presentation, that it always is hard when we do it at three o'clock, because I feel like, um, those that are there, um, so I just feel like I wanted to raise it, because just a warning, it's coming, it will come every year, um, on that. But that's, that was just my question, and so, but it's intended that our joint meeting would be on the nineteenth or some other date to be determined.
Uh, right now, it's intended to be on the nineteenth.
Okay.
And that was mirrored up so that the county is already aware of that as well.
That's the key.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve the school board's twenty, FY twenty budget development calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Brings us to eight point oh four, adopt a resolution authorizing an application to the Virginia Public School Authority for the sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed seven million, nine hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, with the objective of providing net proceeds of seven million, three hundred and forty thousand dollars for the FY, I'm sorry, for the twenty eighteen fall pool. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve eight point oh four.
Motion by Ms. Egan, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion?
Are we going to get a detail of?
Check the attachment, let's see.
Chris, or Matt, Mr. Fulmer, may I ask a question, please?
Sure can.
So, um, I've, I've got this, understands the fall pool. Can you discuss, uh, you've told me before, so the Furry Farm, um, eight hundred and some odd thousand dollar, where is that fitting in? Is that going to be spring or?
Um, so we have the eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars approximately, which was cash funded by the Board of Supervisors, that's already been appropriated.
Right.
And maybe we've already even committed to that contract, so we have those funds, we're in process of that design work, so that's completely separate from this borrow and the spring borrow.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we're tracking.
Sure.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, um, so we, we're, this seven million, four hundred and thirty, how, how, is there any details on that?
Yeah, so, um, two hundred thousand of that will, um, go into the design phase for Phase One of the mechanical systems repairs at Rock Hill Elementary School, and the other seven point two, three million dollars will go into the purchase of Fredericksburg Christian School.
You mean the North Stafford location?
Correct. The former Fredericksburg Christian School is how I refer to it in most of this documentation.
Mr. Fulmer, I think we may need to make a slight editorial, uh, change on that resolution because it says, um, repairing the mechanical system at Rock Hill Elementary and renovating the former Fredericksburg Christian School, so it should be purchasing.
Purchase and renovate.
It's just the purchase.
So now technically it is just the purchase and this fall borrow, you're correct.
This language says renovating, so we, we just need to, before that's signed, that needs to be changed from renovating to purchasing.
So, um, if I may ask you guys to, if you can approve it with that, um, change in the reso?
Sure.
Because we want to get this rolling tonight.
Ms. Hall, will you make sure that change gets made? Okay.
I apologize on that, because it did get switched up here late in the game last week.
Ms. Egan, is that acceptable to you and Dr. Chase?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. Any other questions? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve eight point oh four with the change from renovating the former Fredericksburg Christian School to purchasing in that language in the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Eight point oh five, approve the award of a service contract- 8.05, approve the award of a service contract to Train U.S. Inc. of Ashland, Virginia in the amount of 101,774 using FY19 operating funds in support of the school division's heating slash ventilation slash air conditioning HVAC chiller maintenance plan. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McOsker, second by Ms. Egan, any discussion?
My only comment is, let's hope we don't have to use this contract a lot in the next seven days.
Oh, that's right, we better get this awarded in the morning.
Yes, indeed.
Good point, Ms. Hazard.
Yes.
All right, and no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the amended 8.06, approve the memberships of each school board advisory committee. Do we have a motion?
Um, yes, I. Let me, let me start off, if I can, before I make the motion of how they will make sense. It was wonderful and what was stated in work session, we are very excited that there are many people who want to be on our school board advisory committees this year. So of course, in the exuberance of everybody applying, we have, we did look at our policies and our policy, current policy 1110 does limit our committees to 20 members and we have certain committees that have more members and so the board does not want to, to turn anybody away. We believe that this will be, it's exciting that so many people would like to serve on, on these boards. But before we would go through, in my opinion, a change in the policy tonight, I would be making a motion tonight that we would be waiving policy 1110 with the restriction to only 20 members of the committee. I believe we should make that motion first and then we could approve the membership on the committees if that's.
Okay, so that's your motion?
I would make a motion to, that the school board waive policy 1110 regarding the restriction of 20 members to advisory committees to allow that to, just waive that requirement.
Do you want to also waive the, the allocation of the committees per district? Did that not say there were two per board member and then the at-large would be appointed separately? I believe you raised that question before.
Right, I think two of the appointments for membership on each committee, I, I think that's actually positive to, to keep that, but if the seat is not filled by a certain date, hmm, and six at-large seats, the rest will be at-large.
Yeah, I, I, basically if we're, if we're waiving the, the limit of 20, we can just make them general appointments, is that what the board wants to do? For this year?
For this year.
Let's do it for this year and see how it turns out.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, let's not modify the policy yet. So I would, let me restate the motion. We would move that we, the board waive policy 1110 regarding the number of seats available for committee membership to be at this time open and that there is not a requirement for the district representatives to serve in those roles.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Hazard and a second by Ms. Young. Discussion?
I just, before we vote, I just like, I think, Ms. Johnson, did you do something spectacular here to get all these, who was the, who was the champion to get hundreds of people on these committees?
Hurricane.
Come to the mic, please.
So Ms. Missy called me and said she did not have a large number of folks signed up, so the communications team, the entire team, we came together and we used multiple channels. So we emailed parents, we also sent out a robocall, social media, and we put it on our website and so, yes.
You didn't promise pizza for the CIP advisory.
No, I did not, I did not, not this time.
That's like 32 people.
Not this time, but we are running a campaign for the Impact Aid forums and we are offering participation for the highest, pizza parties for the highest number of participation to get those forums signed and back in.
That's a wonderful job on this, this, I've never seen so many, it's.
Happy to help, happy to be a resource.
I'm usually begging people to, to, to sign up for some of these. We've, we've had some positions that during the whole year were never filled. So this, this is fantastic and I want to thank Mrs. Hazard for, for, you know, making this suggestion because she's the one that, that, you know, raised this before about these, the at-large and, you know, how do we pick and.
Absolutely.
You know, the policy needs to be looked at, so I, I really appreciate your suggestion and, and this way we can certainly accommodate everyone who's volunteered.
Absolutely. Well, the communications team is a resource, so anytime we need to get the word out there, we're happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion? No, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, so Ms. Hall, would it help you if we make a general announcement that everyone who has applied for a committee is now going to be on that committee as long as they come to the meetings?
Can we announce what the official implementation date is, where we do our big group?
The kickoff meeting, yes, that's a good idea.
Should be on Monday, but.
Six o'clock here, so everyone that's on a committee is welcome to come to a, I don't know if we call it orientation, but we, we get everybody together for just a kickoff session, which is literally not very long, and then the committees go into their first, their first meeting and, and elect their chairman.
Do we have an alternative date in case of rain and not shine?
Well, we'll have to publish something.
Okay, just, just a thought.
Madam Chair, I think we need to do the follow-on motion though to approve the applications.
Well, that's right, oh.
So I'd like to make the motion to approve our, the memberships on our advisory committees.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hazard. All right, all in favor of the motion to approve everyone that applied for every one of our committees, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all right. So Ms. Hall, good luck tomorrow. She's going to send the word out, but, but you heard it first at, at our meeting. All right.
Ms. Johnson, maybe since you did such a great job on that, you can also post in the other, same places that everybody was allowed in.
All right, that brings us to information items. Item number 9.01, approve the school board's FY20 budget priorities. I'm going to ask Dr. Chase to address this.
So you should have a copy of the draft of our budget priorities and goals and I'd like to thank Ms. Decatur and Ms. Young for their assistance with this at our last FAB meeting. And this is, the errors are mine, so.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Chase about these or comments? This is here for information and it's the intent to come back for action at the next meeting, correct, Dr. Chase?
I think final action is not until October.
Oh, October, all right, so I guess we can put it on for information again if you'd like.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to have to excuse myself, I just got the SOS for my son.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Egan.
Thank you.
I do have a comment on budget priorities. And I spoke with, with Dr. Chase today. I, thank you for the, for the work that has been done on this, I, I think it is great. So I'm really going to give a couple of, of mine. And I'm not sure how we approach this, but I know that in the second bullet that we went to, I was thinking attract, retain, and develop exceptional staff. I know that we have certain things that we want for our teachers as well, but I do believe that some of our things on the back that talk about, you know, sort of the stipends and some of our non-instructional staff, just feel like there's some way that we need to lump together that we want to attract and retain and develop an amazing Stafford County Public School staff. That doesn't mean we can't pull out certain groups, but I believe that is, for me, that is one of our, our goals. I think that, you know, the critical need areas may not just be in the teaching profession, we have those though.
Madam, Ms. Hazard, just on the first point, I tend to agree with you also, I didn't catch that. And I, from what I understand, VEA talks about educational professionals and that kind of encompasses all employees as educational professionals. And then may, so maybe if, with the will of the board, we say attract and retain exceptional educational professionals and, and then we go into details possibly, if that's, if that's the will of the board.
We'll still have to then break it out because some of the things are relating to the teachers.
Yep, yes.
I agree, and, and that, that wasn't meant to take out those things, but, and I also think the word develop might want to be in there too because we want to do that. I would say in the area of, and this is just something for us to examine, I know that I have spoken with Dr. Kizner about transportation, I know many of us are concerned, or I was, about the double bus runs and I believe Dr. Kizner is going to be sending this information. But if that is also a budget issue that we, to, in order to eliminate double bus runs, that we need more buses, and that's if, and, and so I'm, I'm deferring that, but I'm just trying to put out, because we have a few weeks to talk about, if that is a budget necessity for us to eventually phase out double bus runs, if we need equipment, let's put that as, as part of our budget. And like I said, I know you're going to be looking into that, but I just wanted to throw that one out because the double bus runs are.
When, when you talk about the double bus runs, we also need to look and see if, when we do redistricting, that we will have that issue. And in addition to that, there is a pilot where the timing is changing, so we may not need double bus runs, because that's the pilot that's being done at Park Ridge. So this is something just to keep in mind though.
Right, no, no, and I think as we monitor that pilot program, that we do that, but if we, anyway, it's just something I want us to look at, that if it ends up coming down to an equipment issue, it's also going to be something I think that we need to plan for. I think those were my.
Okay. Any other comments? Well, this will be coming back to us on, for information at the next meeting as well. So anything you want to bring up, Ms. Decatur?
I do just want to encourage the members of the board to, to look at the current draft, compare it to our previous budget goals and just make sure that there's nothing missing that you wanted to continue or, you know, or vice versa, but just definitely compare the two and make sure that it really encompasses everything that you want to see on it.
Thank you, Ms. Decatur. And Ms. Hall, could I ask you to, to send us last year's budget goals and this year's in two attachments and that way we'll get, we'd have them right in one place? Thank you. All right, no further discussion this evening. That brings us to 9.02, approve the FY20-FY29 capital improvement plan, large projects and infrastructure priorities. This will be coming back to us for action at the next meeting. Are there any questions for Mr. Townsend? Or, I guess you're it, aren't you? You're, you're Mr. Haran tonight. Or comments that you'd like to make for him to take back? Yes, Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so I just had a, a comment in looking at this that we have three projects that are considered new and they've bumped down to existing projects. And in the case of Ferry Farm, of course, it was initially a rebuild and it got bumped down to a renovation, but I just want to draw attention to the Drew Middle School renovation, that I don't want us to forget that and I don't want it to continuously get bumped off the list by new projects. So that's my only comment.
Thank you, Dr. Chase.
I, I have one.
Ms. Hazard?
I guess my comment, my comment will be, but this is broadly with regard to the CIP process, but I will probably hit that in one of the next ones. I feel very uncomfortable myself voting on these priorities before we have the current enrollment figures for this year. Right now, we are being asked to add projects and such, but we have no new information since the end of school last year. I don't know, I mean, I have maybe feelings about these, but I don't know, Dr. Kizner shared with us in the work session, 452 or, or some new kids have arrived. If they are high school students, that may push something if they're elementary, and I don't need to know the answer tonight, but for me, it will, I, I will struggle to approve this list because it is not based on new information. And for me to say to the priority, to my counterpart across the street, nothing, no new information for me has been brought to me since May when I gave the old ones. And, and it's, this isn't really, Mr. Townsend, for you to respond to, I'm just saying the broader picture for me, I am, I don't want to in two months get numbers that then we say, and I looked at, I almost voted against the budget priorities, the budget calendar because of the CIP in there, but I did not because I don't think that was the right decision. But to say then in November, we will have new figures and we're going to then tell them to the Board of Supervisors and then we're going to say, but we've already approved our priorities, I will probably not be able to vote in favor of that just because of the process. I don't think it, for me personally, I don't, it's not the work that you've done, it's, I think that new information is coming and would make a better decision.
So I was looking at the bottom two news and the North Stafford campus, phase one and phase two. Why, the fact that we just got it and the fact that we're moving the students there, it's not going to be over capacity? Like why would we have these two as priorities, you know, the, right here, you know, phase one and phase two? Is this like addition? I, I don't, I don't see that as a priority.
And that, and that is well within the board's realm to correct.
I, I think we have bigger, and, and the other, you know, one of the things that I want to continue to see on there is melchers and somehow faded away, I don't know where it went. But, you know, I'm being promised that it's being worked on, but I don't think those two are priority for me.
The melchers projects were assimilated back into the infrastructure three R list. As far as the phase one and phase two additions to the former Fredericksburg Christian School, they are where they are based on the first five years of the new CIP as part of the proposed process being unbalanced. All of these large capital projects, the first year of eligibility was FY25. So where you see below the bold line, all these projects without a priority number assigned, that's just essentially the first year that those projects could open, except for these phased projects where phase two, Fredericksburg Christian is coming after phase one and then phase three and four for Ferry Farm renovation is after phase two. Those projects just, we just set the start date for funding right after. But yeah, you guys are, the board is able to change that as you'd like.
So this is not, this is informational today, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, ma'am.
It's, it's coming back for action at the, the next meeting, but one thing that I, I recall, I'm continually being told is the CIP is a living document and hopefully that concept will not change with our new approach because when we're looking 10-plus years out, there's always going to be things that come up that we're not aware of and, and, you know, a good example is what Ms. Hazard was talking about, just the current year's students. We don't know them today. Hopefully we'll have a count as of the end of the month, but there are things we don't know today that may happen next year or the, or later this year. So one thing we, we need to, to keep in mind and certainly, you know, remind our, our counterparts is that we make our decision on the CIP based on the facts that we have available and the best prediction that we can make at the time for future occurrences. But, you know, we have to maintain the, the authority to, to change that because our task is to do what's in the best interest for the students in Stafford County, so. This will come back to us for action at the next meeting. If anyone has any questions or, or you feel that you need more information, please send it to, to Dr. Kizner. And, and I, I know his plan is when he gets requests, he will send the response to all of us, so I think that will help us all in, you know, keeping informed and, and being able to, you know, to share that information in a, in a timely manner. So thank you. That will come back next meeting on the action item. All right, the next item is the approve the proposed revisions to the joint capital The next item is the approve the proposed revisions to the Joint Capital Improvement Plan policy. Do we have any questions about this item?
Do you want me to start? Okay.
Where do we start?
I can start, or?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Hazard, please.
Really, as a follow-on to the comments that I just made, I feel that this joint CIP process and as it's proposed, I believe that last year was sort of our year to try and learn lessons from last year and to try and do it better this year. And how I'm feeling at the moment is the CIP doesn't respect the school board calendar. We get enrollment projections, we can't tell you how many kids we have in July, we barely even know how many we have. We get to back to school night. I feel that this process, for it to be a joint process, is the process has to be joint. And right now, there just does not respect for the school board calendar of when we're going to have the best available information. So again, like I said, I believe I said it at the last work session, I believe that there is a desire to have a joint product with us, but it's not a joint process because we've already learned that the Board of Supervisors has approved that they want to use design capacity in some way. And we just spent, you know, a good hour and a half discussing program capacity and why it should be used. So I have to just say broadly, I think I was hoping we would learn more. I also believe that some of this calendar is very front-loaded into the fall. Again, not reflective of respecting the school board's calendar. The CIP really is part of the budget, which can be later. When we used to approve the CIPs, now I've done a smattering look, I will tell you, I didn't go back super far, but many times the school board approved their CIP pieces, and then we sent it over to the Board of Supervisors. And it was in the early winter because they looked at it as part of the budget. So I guess my concern is, is front-loading all of this data, and then we get the enrollment projections, we start to redistrict with those, and we say we didn't use those for this process. I just, that's very hard for me to be able to buy into. I probably have lots of other ones, but that's my broad comment.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. McGoskey?
I have a comment. I just, I know that the members have changed recently, and we just need to try to work together. I mean, we are in this together. We just need to give the process a chance or better it, work together with the new members. I mean, just some dropped off on our side, some dropped off on their side. And the last meeting, I was just attending, and I thought it went well. At least, that's what I thought. So, but I do agree with, you know, the things that you brought up. But we just need to work together, the Supervisory Board and the School Board, for the best interest of the school system.
Thank you. Ms. Decatur?
So, well, my initial question is answered. It says, "School Board Members Dwayne, Dr. Sarah Chase, Patricia Healy discussed several revisions." And I'm, so then I read further. I'm assuming those revisions were discussed at the Joint School Working Committee. Right? Okay. So my concern really is, this says, "Removed the statement in Appendix A that provides priority will be given to growth over rehabilitation of schools at the Oversight Committee." I'm sorry. Priority will be given to growth over rehabilitation of schools, and the Oversight Committee may recommend that in-process projects are amended or removed to meet the needs of community. So what we're, so we've removed that, so we're not going to be giving priority to growth over rehabilitation of schools. And I understand that because we don't want students going to school in schools that really have significant needs. I get that, although I do find it a bit odd because we had to fight tooth and nail to get a sewer treatment at Hartwood. You know, it only passed four to three. So I don't know, I'm just, I'm a little concerned. We're growing very quickly. We're going to need extra seats. I'm just, I'm just saying what my concern is. So I'm sure that we can still look at it, that it will all be.
I just wanted to speak to why that changed, what the discussion in the meeting was to lead to that. But, and it was just pointing out that there can be a major safety issue that comes up. So for example, you could have a school that has major air quality problems or something like that, and we don't want to be tied to the decision-making process because of that.
Well, so that's my concern, because they're all rated. And so there are ratings based on safety, air quality, you know. So they are all rated, and we did, you know, give priority this past time. We, the committee voted to give priority to a new elementary school over the Ferry Farm, and I know that that was not favorable for you, but the seats were necessary. So now, you know, we have a new elementary school in the works for the students that need the seats in it. And we also have, you know, Ferry Farm. So I'm just saying that's concerning to me, but we'll see where it goes.
So I'll address some of that to expand on. So we, when we went through the document, we really focused on the actual examination of the 10% for infrastructure, 10% for safety. So we felt that Appendix A was kind of like a non sequitur. It was like, here we have a document where we're explaining all our dates that are hopefully, like Ms. Hazard said, will line up, probably I need to tighten that up. Here's what both boards are doing. They're doing this, down this date, they're doing this. The staff, the experts are actually going through, and they're analyzing these CIP projects, you know, with a tooth and comb and with a magnifying glass. And then, and then we read Appendix A, and it was like, yeah, well, I know you guys did a lot of work, but priority for seats takes over everything, and oh, by the way, if a project started, we could stop it. Well, I mean, that goes without saying. I mean, so it was like, it was kind of like, where did Appendix A come from? And even, and this came from the supervisors as well. And it was, it was actually Tom Foley who said, "I don't think this makes a lot of sense. Why don't we just get rid of this?" Everything else is in that document already. If we want to stop a project as a board, it's going to be seven members of the board anyway, whether it's a supervisor or a school board. So we just said that's, that's like extra stuff that we didn't even know where that came from, and it didn't make sense to us. So we said, we took it off and said, okay, well, you know, the priority is going to be the actual, the analyzing of the actual school or the actual project. And that should go on its own merits. So that's, that's some of the reasons why it just went off, that Annex A went off, anyway.
Sounds good. Chase, did you?
I also just wanted to maybe ask for some clarification from Ms. Hazard. I'm, so the, I understand your argument about the fall, but since most of these projects are 10 or 15 years off, or at least, you know, maybe, is it as much of an issue if we don't have the correct capacity numbers? Does that make sense? My quest, I'm just sort of? My response, my response would be is also to your comment about Drew. I don't know if it should be 28, it could be 26, for all I know. And for me, the numbers that are in that column, and actually, I guess this might have been a question for Mr. Townsend, are those numbers how they fit into the CIP or when we actually need them? Because there's a difference. We may need a school way before it's going to ever fit in the CIP. And for me, the only way for us to know when we need it is based on the most accurate data. And if we are asking for school board priorities, now for me, if I was a, somebody sitting there, what are your priorities? And you have numbered them. When we do our budget priorities, we say, these are all our priorities. But that's not what I believe we are being asked to do, is say, we need all of these buildings at some point in time. They want to know, when do you need the building? First, second, and third, you know, priorities. That's actually part of what I'm struggling with because some of those projects below the line, I don't know for lack of a better term, under the number four, I think they're worthy projects. Where should they fit in, and I hate to say in competition because there's only a finite amount of money. I feel like even though they are far-out projects, because some of them are going to be massively expensive projects, as I have heard the Board of Supervisors say, they really want to start putting money aside. Like, I just sent a child off to college. I didn't start senior year, thank goodness, to pay for that education. I started, well, we started the Virginia Pre-Pre, but anyway, we had a plan for many years to get there. And I respect the comment, and I understand Ms. Healy, and my supervisor is the one that says it all the time about that it's a plan, but we got to stick to some plan or else we can't do that putting aside. And that's what I heard the Board of Supervisors saying. How can we on both sides with year-end savings or different things? Let's not put that into a project, let's go ahead and put it into building the next high school, which is something I believe very strongly in. But I just feel ill-equipped, for lack of a better way of saying it, to prioritize those projects. I find them all very worthy. I think there just has to be more discussion for me, but that's.
Yeah, and I appreciate those comments. And, you know, the discussion with the Board of Supervisors and Mr. Foley back and forth was, you know, they're really looking at the five-year, but they are looking for the school board to say, here are 10-year priority, even though they know the five-year is the window that they are really, hey, listen, we're not going to, we're going to try to, we actually have to get the dollars to fit this five-year window. 10-year, and correct me, 10-year, it's a little bit more, but they still need our priority. So I agree.
To your point, Ms. Hazard, with the year open, on this report, on this working document that staff has provided, it is mixing last year's FY 19 approved CIP, which did account for 10 years of affordability, and new projects which don't necessarily fall within that. So as part of the school board's approved priority list, you guys can alter the dates to the date, to the need date or as you guys would wish, or as you all would wish.
And I think that's the key, is it is a mix of the affordability. Do they want, are we, are we as the school board taking over what we think will work or what should work? That's just where I am.
I would like to add that the supervisors really are giving us more flexibility in this list because of not requiring that the years after year five be balanced within the borrowing limits. And that gives us, you know, flexibility in putting in our project. Whereas in previous years, we had to balance every single one of those years. And that's when it, things started to slide off the scale.
They're still asking us to balance five years.
Well, yeah, we need to balance five because five is the foreseeable future.
Yeah, but I don't know how those two got on there because we didn't, we didn't, that was not part of the top five.
They discussed how, they discussed how.
Which two?
Oh, Phase One and Phase Two.
Oh, those were carried-over projects from last year that did not make the approved CIP.
Frederickburg?
Frederickburg Christian Edition was a project that came up throughout the CIP process in the FY 19 CIP. However, it was not approved.
Right.
So as staff, we just, we took all the projects that came up last year, as well as any new projects such as North Stafford High School Fine Arts Wing, and put them on one list.
So if anyone on this board wants to make any suggested changes to these projects, I'd suggest we send that to Dr. Kizner. He can share it with everyone on the board, and, you know, we can consider that when we, when we come back. And Ms. Decatur, I just wanted to provide a little more information on that removal of the statement. The discussion really went towards the renovation projects not just being left out where the, and trumped by the growth, by this automatic extra credit, so to speak. So I think Dr. Chase, you know, raised the issue. And the intention was that we give full consideration to renovation as well as what we need for growth. Because we acknowledge there may be some renovation where we'll get some more space, which would address both, but there may be some, you know, where there's nowhere to add space. But we didn't want those schools never to get addressed for the renovation because, you know, we're, they lost, they didn't get the extra credit because it had to do with growth. So I think it's just to leave it open and be able to consider these things more and not give automatic priority. Is that, that was my recollection of the discussion.
So what I would suggest is instead of striking it, maybe just editing it to include some different wording. Because same example, in the case where there's a, you know, point zero two, you know, points difference, I want, I would like the flexibility to make common sense decisions and have, to your point, flexibility. So, you know, I don't know, I'll review it and see if there's still flexibility without that Appendix A, but right now, I would ask that we revise it rather than striking it.
Sure, and if you have some suggested language, that would be fantastic if you can do that. And I keep putting this all through Dr. Kizner, but he is going to be our central depository for at least the foreseeable future. So if we share things with Dr. Kizner, he can share it either through Missy or with everyone else, and then we don't have any potential issues of having violations of FOIA for, you know, email correspondence and meetings. But that would be, that would be great if you could, you come up with something. And certainly, you know, we left this as, it was a discussion item, and it's something that's going to have to go through both, both boards. So it was in no, no means intended to be final, you know, after that discussion. So thank you for bringing that up. All right. No further discussion tonight on the CIP policy. That brings us to the information item, approve, and that will be at the next meeting, the Annual Elementary School Program Capacity Model in support of the FY 20, FY 29 Capital Improvement Plan and the 2019 Student Accommodation Plan. We had a good discussion on this in the work session. We may want to take a look at that language because I think we were in agreement that we don't want to annually change the model. We may change the calculations based on the application of the model. But my understanding that was a consensus of discussion, you know, in the board. If anyone has anything they want to, you know, to bring up now, feel free. Otherwise, you know, submit your suggestions to Dr. Kizner, but this will be coming back to us at the next meeting. Now, a question I have is, does this board want to have another work session on this before the next meeting? If you, you know, we can, I think we had a good discussion, but if there was anybody that feels that we need to have further discussion or more you want to talk about, you know, just let us know and we can schedule that. We pretty much have work sessions every meeting now, so we can, we can put that back on. But I appreciate the discussion this evening. I think it was very helpful and, you know, clarified a lot of points. Ms. Hazard?
I do have a question, and this ended up being, Matt thinks he's going to, nope, you can sit there because it's not for you. It's actually for Mr. Fulmer. I know, in that horrible, but not to answer tonight. Regarding the state funding for us by teachers, is that done that we submit the number of teachers we have and we are paid for them, or do they do it based on the state staffing ratio? And you don't, you don't have to answer it tonight unless you want to, because I don't like to put people on the spot on that kind of.
Come on down and tell us.
Sure. They determine the number based on state calculations on enrollment, et cetera. You know, we obviously submit, I believe it's monthly reports to them. So they know, they know what our ADM is for the year, and then they project going forward. And so they take that number and project for ratios for, and that's all staffing that are SOQ staffing. So they use the SOQ standard, then give us a percentage of that for our composite index. Does that make sense? Long story short is, they calculate the number of teachers based on SOQ, based on students, and then we get a percentage of what the average salary is for a state teacher.
So when our staffing standards just reflect the state standard ratio, it says one FTE per 24 students, which would be kindergarten grades one through three, and grades four through five would be for 25. That is. That is how they would fund us, is they would take our kindergarteners and divide by, I don't know, 25 or something like that. Is that how they would do it?
I can confirm how they calculate the number of teachers.
That's why I wanted to ask that question. Because that is important to me, because potentially what is being proposed is higher than those averages, and I would want us to figure out how we then account for those funds. Anyway, do you, I will try and write up my question specifically, but my concern becomes if we have, if we are proposing 27 in four through five, but we are getting funded for 25 students per class, where is that extra funding going? And not that we don't need it, I'm not saying that, but I just want to make sure I understand that. So, I'll try and write the question.
I can confirm and clarify.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fulmer, before you leave, you mentioned the SOQ. Did they, we get funded for teachers based on the SOQ numbers, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, because those, those SOQ traditionally have been significantly higher than the numbers that we have in Stafford County public schools. And then, my heart started going even faster when you'd mentioned the composite index, because that's a reflection of our real estate values and our average income, you know, in the county, and we all know we have high and higher on those two numbers. So, that is the test, we don't want to be the highest, because the higher our composite index, the less funding we get from the state. So, it would be, it would be, you know, helpful, you know, to let us know how this is, you know, how it works out. Yes, Ms. Young just mentioned Title I, we get special funding for that, but...
I will mention our, our composite index is actually favorable compared to other divisions and counties, localities with, that are similar to us. Ours is about 34% that were required to contribute of SOQ, which obviously that's, there's still a debate on what's SOQ, on what's reality, where there's other locations that are required to pay 80% of the SOQ and only receive 20% funding from the state.
Do they have billions in their budgets?
They have, they have a lot of, a lot of money, but there are some that you, you, there's some disparity there. So, but I just want to point out that we're not on the really high end, we're actually on the lower end.
Well, that's good.
For, and we've been over this before, but composite index is very complicated calculation. And so obviously, there's, there's some factor in there that's keeping our number low, and but we are actually very close to what Spotsy's composite index is. And with the Biennium, they just updated the new composite index numbers, and ours only increased a tick, so actually, not very much.
Good. I don't, I don't want that to be high.
Yeah, we do not.
The lower it is, the more funding we get. Okay, thank you. And Ms. Hazard, you'll send those questions in and to Dr. Kizner, and then we'll all see the responses. All right. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Decatur?
Yes, there are. Sorry, I know it's been...
No, go right ahead.
I just wanted to share with the board that the SEA was kind enough to send out a survey to teachers. 150 teachers responded, and, well, 150, you know, hold on, I'm getting it.
Educators.
Educators, yeah. 96.1% of those that responded were, were teachers. The survey was very raw, and it had a lot of outliers, obviously, but it asked them questions like, "What was your class size last year?" And what would your optimal class size be if you could choose? And, and I think a lot of the teachers really considered a lot of the outliers, for example, students with special needs in their classrooms, ESOL, you know, all of the, you know, all of the details that are pertinent to their particular classrooms. I just wanted to share with you that of the 150 responses that we got, the average maximum optimal class size response was 20, and that was also the highest selected from all of the 150 responses. That's directly from our teachers in the classrooms, hands-on kids, and I feel that it's very important to share that. The number 18 came in as second as maximum optimal class size. And, and I'll share the rest of the details with you. Those were the two big ones, but I really felt that it was important for me in considering this, to hear directly from the ones who are in the classrooms, and I thought that'd be important to share with you. And I'll send you the rest of the details if you guys would like to see them, and I'll also send to Missy, so she can add in case anyone else wants to see.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion on this item? Now, it brings us to our last information item, approve the, this is for next meeting on the action, to approve the proposed revisions to the school board's Finance and Budget Committee's bylaws. Dr. Chase, do you have anything you want to write, or should we send these comments to?
Just let me know if you have anything that, any questions or anything like that. But I think it's pretty straightforward, we haven't really changed very much.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So any, any questions you have, let's get them raised before the next meeting, and that'll come to us for approval. All right. The last thing on the agenda is the announcement of upcoming meetings. This says the next meeting of the school board is September 25th at 7:00 PM, but Ms. Hall, when is our meeting with the advisor committees? Is it Monday night?
The advisory committee is Monday, yes.
Okay, so Monday evening, weather permitting, 6:00 in this room. Hopefully, we won't have to have people standing, but all the, all the new members of our advisory committees are invited to come for a brief orientation, and then we will break up into committee meetings for each of the separate advisory committees. So, thank you very much. We are adjourned.